Rest of the room.
He was brushing up on this tomorrow.
Huh?
Did you see this?
No.
When you're ready, I'll message.
Where is it on there? I'll have to Google it, I don't know.
It's under, it's only on TFC. That's, that's the only place I've seen it.
I don't know, I've never seen it, so.
I think you keep mentioning, I'm like, where, where is it? I sent you a picture of it.
Yeah, we, when I already.
When I get started, we get ready.
Ready? All right, let's do this. Off today, good afternoon. This is the Guam EPA Board of Directors' regular meeting. Today's date is Thursday, August 21st, 2025. The approximate time is four o'clock PM. This meeting is being recorded. I'll go around the room. Steven Carvalho.
Steven Carrara.
Steve Olesky.
Heather Kidigwa.
Kathleen.
Orland.
Thank you. Seeing that we have a quorum, the public notification went out. Let's get this meeting started. Put their motion to approve the agenda.
Send them.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Six one, approval of last month's meeting minutes.
And here's to approve them.
I don't check you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, first item is the septic tanks rules and regulations. So last month, we heard the presentation. Everyone in the board packet has the rules and regs. And it looks like we have a summary spreadsheet of what's changed. Maybe do you want to just run through captain on the changes that were made from what we were reviewing?
For sure. Um, let me see, okay. So I just put together for you guys, just a summary of the changes that were made. And forgive me, I don't have the full document right in front of myself. But I believe that was emailed to all of you guys in time so you could read it. So what you'll see is just with the table of contents, right? We simply updated language to match. You know, instead of saying leaching field, it says soil absorption system, thank you ma'am. Things like that. So when it says minor language updates, it's really just bringing the terms to be more current and being consistent with the, the, um, quality practice or whatever it is. One note, and on the, the actual PDF of the changes that you guys saw, pages three and four, the definitions. When I put that out for public comment, I neglected to take, I neglected to put back in all the definitions that we struck. So the definitions in, in the current chapter 12 are not in alphabetical order. So they were kind of mishmashed all over the place. So we struck the whole section, put everything back in alphabetical order with the additional definitions that we have. Okay. And so you'll see what I listed in this table, what definitions we added, just so that there's no confusion about that. I believe that we will have to put that struck section back into this document before it would go to the legislature. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Um, again, you can see, you know, page five. We, throughout this document, you'll see where we added references to the GAR or to other parts of the Guam code annotated. That was so that, um, what we wanted to say is, okay, we're going to point over to this section. So we don't repeat the language because if it changes, then we'd have to change it in two places. And we didn't want to have conflict there. So we struck a lot of language because it exists in other parts of Guam law already. And then we just pointed to the reference. So when you see where we say we added references or we replaced with a reference to, that's just what I mean there. So on page five, um, we just added that reference to 22 GARD, chapter 25, um, which talks about sewer. Page six, uh, again, just update.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Are these changes from the old regs or changes from the document that we reviewed?
No, these are changes from the old regs.
Oh.
So I just wanted to summarize the changes that you guys have read in this document. So this is from old reg to what you read, not a change to what you read. So what, what you read is still exactly as what you read. Okay. Okay. So I'm going to spare you going through each page, uh, line by line. What I will say is that, um, I think some of the most important areas that you need to look at are probably, um, on pages 35 to, or 34 to 40, which is the addition of the language for the type four toilet systems and holding tanks. And it looks like I cut myself off a little bit there. But basically those just describe the requirements for, um, that we've installed for type four toilet systems, right? It has to be NSF 245 certified. There's an operation and maintenance contract that's required. You have to use a KIPA approved installer. So those are just highlighted there. Holding tanks, again, you know, we want those to be used as a last resort or when nothing else could work. But we want to be able to support, um, you know, a homeowner or someone being able to build on a property. They do require periodic pumping. They require ONM contract, operations and maintenance contracts. And then, you know, economic analysis. So just the highlight of the other requirements that are there. Another area to highlight would be pages 41 to 46, which is outlines the operating permit requirements. So I just wanted to bring those areas to your attention. And I'll spare you reading everything. So pending that, do you have any questions? I guess I can look through.
On, on the holding tanks, how is it determined when it's a last resort? How do you determine?
So, um, and I'll ask my chief engineer to step in and talk about the required, the actual land use requirements that I'm not an expert in. But holding tanks, um, can only be used, like, if there's no other possibility to put in a septic system or a mound system because the water table is too high. So if you have water incursion into the septic tank, it's not going to work, right? It won't perform its function. So a holding tank would prevent that water from going into the tank, but it has to be pumped out. The other time that you would use a holding tank is that if the bedrock, um, if the area around the, the space or around the, the land is too hard to put in a septic tank, so you don't want to dig it up. And Peter, please correct all the ridiculous things that I've said, but.
No, you're, you're right on.
Okay.
Have there been any holding, or have there been any septic tanks two that the water, um, comes up and, and messes with it?
Actually, you know, along coastal zone areas where there's no sewer? That's the reason why you have high nutrient levels in the coast and you test positive wrecked water. So a lot of the southern villages are not able to sew it. They're really close to the water table along the coast. So in situations like that, they, we would recommend a holding tank, which, you know, serves as containment for the septic so that it doesn't bleach into the recreational waters because it's just.
But there's none up there, up there that's above the spring or anything?
So in the north, uh, it would be used for smaller lots that don't have sewer connection that is way too far out, uh, for them to connect and don't meet the setback requirements to have a leaching field.
Right.
But I think one thing that's important to note is that these holding tanks, because they're required to be pumped out. When we did a market research, it's about a hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars a month, depending on the size of the holding tank to be pumped out. So that's even more than what we think a sewer.
So they can be expensive.
They can be expensive. So again, last, last option.
Sure, yeah, they're not ideal. We also are aware that many holding tanks end up punctured so that they don't have to pay to be pumped, which ultimately turns them into a cesspool. And, um, we do know that's happened here in Guam. So that's one of the reasons that we want to avoid using holding tanks if possible. But we also wanted to make them available so that, you know, members of the public that have no other alternative could possibly go to us.
Yeah, but as part of the permitting system, you can also compare the water usage to what's being pumped out. So it should be about people, right? Like if they're using, you know, 2,000 gallons of water and you're only pumping out 500 every month.
Well, and the other thing, you know, is that even for existing holding tanks, so we know there are existing holding tanks here in Guam. For them to be permitted, we'll have to go out and do an inspect, do an inspection. They'll have to have pressure testing, provide us with, you know, a year's worth of statements from GWA or, or their public water system. So we can verify some of that information for existing tanks. And then for all new tanks, it would be the same thing. We would evaluate those same, uh, same things for our renewal permit as well. So we should curb the cesspool problem.
So in, in summary, if there is no treatment option, the holding tank is the last resort. Correct. We always want onsite, you know, treatment and disposal via leaching fields. But if that's not possible because of high water table, approximated quote, you know, surface water, marine water, that kind of stuff. The, the only feasible alternative would be a holding tank that ha, that would have to be pumped out monthly. So it's, it's going to be the exception, an exceptional, uh, option. But it's an option.
Any other questions, sir, sir?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, I don't know what section this is, but it's, uh, it's about, like, if the, a permit is, like, when it's valid, like, if it, if work has not started within 180 calendar days, if work is suspended, if work is continued without interruption for one year. So I think my question is like, the last sentence says, if work is continued without interruption for one year, beginning with the date of issuance of a building permit. So what happens after they, 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 they're continuously building and 365 days passes?
So, and I have to pull this back to the chief engineer, Brian Bearden. What he said is that, that language is consistent with DPW. So if after a year you haven't finished your project, you have to get a new permit. And that's essentially what that's saying, that's my understanding.
I believe it is consistent. I'm just curious, like, how does that work? Someone will be, in theory, working without a permit unless they're proactive and on month 11 applying for a new permit, but is that even allowed or does your permit have to expire first?
No, I think you can, you can apply before your permit expires. And we do have language in here that says you should apply before your permit expires.
I think the, I think, you know, in relation to owner, builder, that is a bit of a tricky because they're doing it at their leisure. And sometimes we'll get opportunity requests that go back, you know, five or more years. And like, where's the, where's the, where's the, the permits for this thing, right? It's, it gets that old. And I think DPW has a mechanism where if it continues, then every year you're going to, you know, regardless of whether or not you're complete or not, you're going to renew a permit application, which is good because it kind of keeps everybody in check. So we don't forget that, you know, five years later, when, when a request comes in and we're going through our hard coffee to figure out where's this permit at, you know? It's difficult, so. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, yes.
Sure.
Do we know just how many holding tanks have been hold per person? Like, how common is it?
It's not very common.
Okay.
That's the short answer. We do have some numbers based on permit requests. They're in a spreadsheet that is on our C drive. And it's like under a dozen or a couple of, it's a, it's a relatively small, um, number.
And then one more thing, I just, I was, when I, when I read my homework, the.
Thank you.
The, um, at the bottom of page two, and I don't have it with me, but it says something about, um, putting, uh, right at the bottom. I just thought we should add something that like the upkeep or maintenance of the thing.
To that purpose?
Yeah, so people don't, um, I think it's talking about the, the cost of putting the, of putting in these type fours and, and, um, things and the wording. Sorry.
That's okay.
But it says, it says something about, about cost, I thought it was page two. But I, it didn't mention maintaining or maintenance for it. And that's what I would like to make, make sure that we.
And that's for the type four?
All of them, maybe?
Yeah. Do you want to go, yeah, so the, in the operating permit section, let's go.
So 1211.
Thanks. Really? All right, thought I was sly.
At the bottom. Said repairs are.
Valid.
Yeah, I think it's under B two.
All right, so 1211A. B two, a type four toilet facility operation and maintenance provider.
Okay. Okay, they're a mound system operation and maintenance provider. You say that about, okay, we do say that.
We do.
Type four.
Yeah, so we require, um, the operation and maintenance contract. But then even for the renewal, they have to have that, the, um, the contract for ONM. But they also have to give us a report of the ONM that was done in the year past. So they say, okay, I have a contract for this provider to come out, evaluate the maintenance and operation of my system. If that provider finds any, um, any problems, then they have to be documented and repaired. And we do address that in the operating permit.
Can you remind me, how, how often does that happen?
Every two years.
Every two, okay, all right. Thank you.
I will say that for the type four systems, the ONM happens annually or per the manufacturer's recommendations. But our permit requirements are for every two years. Anybody else? That is a great question, and Water Division has that information. I think Fuji Clean is one of them. Do you know, do you have that list? Okay. I can follow up on that to see who actually Water Division has approved. And Glenn, you may know more than I do, but.
Yeah, there's, I, I want to say there's one contractor that is, and I've gone through the certification process for the unit that is, that they're supplying. Uh, and I know that in the regulations, we were supposed to identify list those certified operators. We have installed it that we haven't done.
Yeah, so that for sure, I have to follow up on, but we have a chief engineer now.
I haven't met the.
Oh, I got ahead of Michelle, that's in the administrators' report. Any other questions? And I'm happy to follow up on that, pretty new.
All right, hearing no other comments or chime in if there is. Is anyone need more time for you to stop me or do we want to approve, reject, approve or comments? Revised chapter 12, GA, 22GAR, Division Two, Chapter 12 Regulations.
I read, I didn't have any other than the maintenance issues. I will make a motion to approve the, the regulations amended here.
With you, there's a can.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion?
Just, just, um, a comment that when it goes to the AG or when it goes to governor's office, if there's any comments or contradictions or conflicts in, in the regulations, it'll get back to us anyway, so.
Okay.
Yeah, then we have to start over again.
I did a pretty extensive evaluation against all the other, I mean, like, you guys should see my test right now. I looked at like the zoning law, the subdivision laws. I have a whole litany of laws that I checked this against, including our own. So the GCA and the GAR, I did a pretty extensive evaluation, so. I feel pretty comfortable that it shouldn't get kicked off for things like that, but.
Great job.
Great job, great.
Yeah, great job. I mean, conceptually, I think if it's.
I can't take the credit.
If it works, I mean, if it's, you know, run as intended to, it's a good thing. I worry about compliance, uh, you know, I have my concerns. We're not very big on maintenance out here, myself included, uh, so.
I just have to say that I've got to give all the credit for getting this done to Brian and Johnny. They did the bulk majority of this work. All I did was clean up comments and try and look for cats. So I have to give Ken Bearden and, and our former acting chief engineer all the credit for giving some.
Give them a kudos. One more discussion that we found when we were finalizing, like, going over the fight to pull again is that we, we found out that the law that was passed, which was supposed to bring parity to parental subdivision, uh, parental subdivisions and the deceded lots, says that the type four systems, residential use is only allowed on deceded lots.
So, and no, it doesn't say that exactly. In Title 10, a GCA, chapter 48, as amended, let me pull up the actual session for you. In 48104E, it is specified that deceded lots, the minimum lot size over the GPZ is 19,200 square feet for type two. And the minimum lot size for a type four is 9,600 square feet. Now, as we proposed that initially, and we just included deceded and parental lots. This specifies those lots, those lot sizes only for deceded lots. So in the regulations, we made clear that the same lot sizes for parental and deceded lots were our requirement. It's consistent with how we've been permitting for the last 10 years. It is also consistent with memo that we have with DPW and other fellow Guam agencies about minimum lot sizes. So we, we tried to clarify that here, but in the, when they passed chapter 48, 10GCA 48, it explicitly only states lot sizes for current or for deceded lots, not parental lots. That jammed us up for a little bit yesterday. We did a good read on everything.
I think this is a good thing, no?
I mean, we tried to make it clear and try to be consistent, so I think we fixed that. I think the, I think there was just a typo in 1048 that that cleared, so thank you for bringing that one up.
How do, does it, how do the ADUs?
So, the ADUs for them, and I have a whole different pa, piece of paper for this one. So over the groundwater protection zone, um, the minimum lot size for an, so there are restrictions, right? So if a property owner wants to put on an ADU, has to be only one primary dwelling unit on the lot, has to be at least 1900 and, or 19,200 square feet. There are two other restrictions that aren't really relative to lot size. But it basically, there, there has to be only one primary dwelling unit, the minimum lot size is, um, 19,200 square feet. And there could be no more than four type four systems per acre. Or no more than four septic systems per acre. So it could be a combination of type two, type four. But that's all outlined in 21GCA 61.
And it gives the agency authority that if the septic tank, or I'm sorry, the septic system cannot be upgraded to allow for the ADU. So they still have a little control, um, over the, over population density of the job.
Well, I think the other thing to keep in mind is, and, you know, Brad and I have had many conversations about this. The definition of ADU says studio or one bedroom. All of the planning assumptions for a one bedroom unit assume two people maximum. I know people will put more than two people in an ADU. However, the planning assumptions and even like with DPW and building law says that studio or one bedroom is two people. So when they plan for that, that's the, that's the contribution to the subject load that we're expecting is up to two people. Now, if people follow that definition of ADU, then I feel pretty good about where everything is, even though I don't like the increase in density that it allows. So it's just going to be, you know, what level of enforcement and restriction do we, what I consider? And, you know, the maximum ADU size is like.
1600 square feet?
No, I think it's 800 square feet.
Not on the previous type.
I think it was 800 and 400. And, and I'll go back and verify, but on smaller lots, um, you can.
Smaller lots, yeah.
Under, I think, under 9,600 square feet. You can't build an ADU in a lot smaller than 3,500 square feet. And if it's less than 9,600 square feet, you wouldn't be able to build on it in the groundwater protection zone anyway because that's too small. So that would be outside of the apple anyway.
Yeah, but there wouldn't even be a single family dwelling home on a 3,500 square foot lot, technically, right?
No, the minimum is 500.
Yeah, it could add an ADU.
So I, I looked at like a lot of different math, a lot of different ways. And then when I get it cleaned up for public consumption, I'll send it to you guys. But it looked not as bad as I previously was looking about. But it will take some enforcement and I'm sure that, you know, we'd appreciate your support in there.
So I have another question. Is it? Um, so I'm looking at this economic impact statement.
Is it?
And on, under number three, I mean, the GCA indirect impact upon, on Guam. You guys see that there will be an increase, you have a whole man on the already overburdened staff. How is that going to be addressed if we don't plan for that? So, you know, of course, our budget is going to determine whether or not we can increase staff. We know that fiscal year 26 budget, which we did receive at the beginning of FY2, FY27 budget or fiscal year is going to be cut federally. So we are looking at other options. We are looking at. So, but as of right now, um, our Guam program manager has told me to still continue to build capacity while we have funds that are coming in next month. So we will increase maybe, um, by way of our inspectors to, um, to, to, I guess, prepare for when we start permitting the type four systems. We don't know how many there will be. We know that we've already permitted 40 in the last 12 months. So that's, you know, kind of the average that we'll see is like maybe 40, but who knows, right? The, with the increase in, in, um, home construction, we'll see what that brings.
Yeah, I think also, weren't we gonna, or did we put out for the engineer one?
We put out a, um, we put out for recruitment for the engineer ones. And then we're going to look to maybe hire maybe three to five inspectors. Because that's their projected, um, their projected work increase. You know, with all the milcom projects, local projects, and now to include inspections of these type four systems. Those are sufficient. That's what they're, that's what they're telling me their needs are. That's coming from.
I can tell you more effectively in about two months. I have a plan to sit down with them in both for like their workflow. And see just like how long it takes them to do an inspection, what's their inspection level of it. I don't want to step on his toes, but that, that was our plan over the summer, just to push back.
Yeah, but you, you'll see in the administrators' report, so there are five inspectors. And just in the timeframe from my administrators' report, you'll see that they did 160 inspections or, I'm sorry, 118.
So those, or those.
So those five inspectors are for all the inspections for wastewater, safe drinking water, and water resources. So just to give you an idea. And, you know, we're talking about type fours and, you know. And, you know, we're talking about type fours and, you know, the.
And holding tanks.
And holding tanks. That number might increase, but we're trying to fill vacancies right now, so hopefully that could help.
I think the other thing to note is that. The fee structure that's associated with these would be enough to pay for one or two inspectors additional. Yeah, because right now, second tanks, that's an unfunded mandate, right? Their EPA. According to their grant structure, they don't, they don't pay us to do that, even though it falls into, you know, many places.
Is there any idea that's in that funding? I don't think we put it in the, um.
The packet.
I don't think we put it in the.
Um, no, it should be with the fee section. So I would have in the fee section. I can go back and check. I don't know that it, it's gonna support that, but I don't know also that we said it was gonna go into any specific fund.
I don't know, it'd be great.
Okay. Um, do you guys want us to make that clear in these draft regs before we send them to legislature?
Hmm, I think we need to identify it.
Identify the funding, uh, we'll go into the water protection fund.
Does that, to get another one of the rights? That, does that need to be identified in the rights that any, any fees?
That we go into the fee structure as far as where the fees are going, when these come in, or the funds that these come in?
But we do need to, we need to identify that there are fees?
Yeah. But you don't have to. I'm not a lawyer, I don't know. Um, I don't see it, but as long as it's there in the, the fee schedule, then it should be. But I, it doesn't hurt to put it in the rights.
Lacking of fee schedule, can we put a section that says fees and all?
We have a fee schedule in here. In, in the draft regs. What, um, I'm not sure that it says specifically that fees collected will be used to pay staff that are doing the permit review. We did say that in the economic impact statement.
I think so long as it goes inside the.
I think, well, we, uh, this should just be, any collect that we should deposit into the fund to be used for the purpose of decisions.
Yeah, it should be.
Associated with the hiring, purchasing of, you know, operational needs. It shouldn't just be type only to hiring, because. You can hire all the staff of the funds that are collected, but what if they need, need? We don't have funds to purch- to purchase it, because you only isolated the funds to go to hiring, operational needs. That, that brought in all of it to hire and purchase items for the, you know, at the discretion of the administrator, what, what is needed for programs.
Yeah, so it says, um, the fees and then, you know, clean the review.
Should I comment? Make a, a section F that says fees collected will be to support water division operations?
Yeah.
Well, I think if you do that, though, you, don't you have to open it up for comments again?
No, so Chairman Calavito and I went around about some of this. If, if we make any changes to the draft at this meeting. If the agency and the board collectively don't feel like it's a substantive change. To the, to the rights, we don't have to put that back out. And, um, I didn't put it in here, because I felt like it was like intimated, but if we need to be explicit about it, instead of implicit.
I mean, I'm not the lawyer for the agency or, or even know anything much to comment on this. But from what I understand, when funds are collected, unless the, the regulation or. The law says they're to be used for this purposes, it goes to the general fund.
Okay.
So I think it would be.
So let's update that.
Better to put it in saying this, these funds collected.
I'm just asking, because in the situation of the RRF, like you have to do some very, very specific things, so I'm just wondering.
That makes sense, yeah, yeah.
I'm, I'm glad you raised that.
Yeah, for sure. That's a really important point.
I think we should make it flexible. I mean, specific but flexible at the same time as.
So I'll say, I'll put in the F, you know, between the end of the text and the beginning of the table that says. Any fees collected will be used to support water division operations. And that will give them the flexibility to use it for staff, training, staff, purchasing, whatever.
Well, but there's a, there's a verbiage there that also says that these funds are not to be comming over the general fund. They are considered program income funds and cannot be transferred.
Okay.
And is solely for the agency only.
Okay, I'll find that and I'll.
Do you?
All of our programs.
Do you hustle with that language?
It's a universal, she knows the difference.
Yeah, there, we have language in, in our, in some of our other regulations.
Okay.
Do that flexibility, but, but.
And I, I don't think just that change means we have to put it back out.
I don't think so, but.
It, I mean, like, to me, it doesn't substantially change the rights or the intent of the proposal that we sent to you guys.
Yes, because there are, there, there was already an intent to provide, I mean, to collect.
Yes. Okay, and I mean, it does state that, and I'll go check Chapter forty-eight, because it does say that we do want fees. That will support our.
And the, the fees, the fees, sorry, the fees would, um, uh. Be enough to support the man hours that go into permitting others?
For one to two people.
Okay.
So.
We, 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 I mean, if someone spends, if someone has to spend three hours doing a permit.
Yeah, yeah, so the fees that, um, that are in this table. Were developed in a spreadsheet that was, some of them were attached to the, um, what went out, public comment. And it literally said, okay, a chief engineer will spend a tenth of an hour, like five minutes on this. That's whatever number of dollars.
Okay.
Uh, an engineer, two or three, will spend an hour on this project, right? So then we added all that up, so that's, that's pretty much how we came to these, these fees. The breakdown is pretty specific. There's a couple of places where we said, uh, we might spend five hundred dollars for work on this, but we don't think many people are gonna do it. And we think that people who have paid nothing and now will be paying five hundred dollars would fight that. So we tried to, where we could try and knock things down, we did.
Yeah.
Um, but we tried to keep this reasonable to pay for the actual time that the employees will spend during the day.
Is the verbiage that Connie was mentioning, is that already on the books for all fees? So we don't really have to insert a sentence, right?
Oh, no, we will insert it, because it's not already here, but it'll be.
But what other fees are it's specific?
What are other programs?
Oh.
Program, program impact.
Okay, so do you wanna amend the motion to include texts that reflect that? Uh, fees will be used for operations. Thank you for pointing that, thank you. Second?
Sir, did you wanna bring up the commercial thing I was talking about?
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Thank you. Regulations, boss.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'll turn it over to you, Michelle, the administrator's report.
Thank you, Chairman. Um. So we have one addition to our agency. Um, so you'll see that we have fifty-four full-time, uh, employees with the addition of our chief engineer. I'd like to introduce Mr. Peter Bautista. Uh, he is a professional engineer. Uh, he comes by way of Washington University, by way of Guam originally. Uh, but, um, he brings over thirty years of experience as an engineer. Uh, and he started last week, Monday, with us, so he is fully immersed into, uh, into all things Guam EPA and. Chief engineer related, so trial by fire, right, right, Peter?
Yes, ma'am.
Maybe you'd like to say a few words?
Alfred Buenas, everybody. Pete Bautista, originally from Guam, screwed his father, Buenas, graduated at Oregon State. As well as the University of Guam with College of Ag and, uh, engineering, bioresources engineering. I worked for, um, the USDA, I, I worked for each Guam EPA, actually, my first professional job was with Guam EPA under Fred Castro, Billy. And Joanne Brown. And I was here for two consecutive contracts, six-month contracts, because I wasn't permanent. And they didn't have funds to permanentize me, so anyway, I worked here for a year. And we worked on projects like the Yale Palace and, you know, golf course and the golf, golf course. All those developments that happened in the early nineties, it was, it was a tidal wave of, uh. Economic tourism-related, uh, development. It was a big time for us. Anyway, um, after that, I, I moved on to the, so, the Soil Conservation Service, now known as the Natural Resource Conservation Service. We started here for almost ten years in Micronesia. And I was like an area engineer covering all the, the islands, so I was the guy that they sent out to. Work with the marshals and the federal states Palau, NMI, Guam, Samoa. I did that for almost ten years, and then it was time to move on, and I moved on with the. I was a design engineer, project engineer, assistant state engineer in three states. So that was Arizona, uh, Oregon, and the state of Washington, not DC, but the state of Washington. And I'm sorry, uh, but that's where the real, uh, you know, production is, is in the, in the inner land. And then the last ten years, I was the assistant state conservationist for management and strategy, so I was kinda like the deputy for ten years. So I, I've been at the leadership level for a decade, and then I retired in twenty-one. And I moved to, I moved out of Spokane and I went west side to the, the ocean side, which is like by, you know, Seattle, everybody knows Seattle. But Olympia is the capital, and then just towards the Olympic peninsula, that's where I live, in Mason County. And when I moved to Mason County, then I worked for the county, and I was a roadway engineer in the public works, and I did that for a couple of years. And that really, I was able to re-register my licensure and get practiced again, because I was in management for ten years. So I, I, I feel like I'm an engineer again. I, I got rejuvenated into the real engineering tech, you know, technical work even. So then I decided to, uh, leave the States and leave my kids, they're kind of grown, came back here just to be at home with my folks and my, and serve the island. So I'm glad you guys picked me up, uh, and, uh, took me in, so I'm excited. Uh, I think your staff, our staff is, is a very committed staff, and they're very supportive. They've been very genuine, generous with me, even Captain. Who else is kidding? Even Captain, she, she, she is like my technical advisor, so, so, so I look to.
Just tell them to find all the stuff that I couldn't find when I got here.
And, and my staff too are very, uh, loyal, uh, committed, I knew to say committed, and, uh, very supportive, so. I look forward to working with you all.
And we're gonna have a luncheon in the operations planning firm tomorrow, starting like, uh, just lunchtime. So if you guys wanna stop by, I agree, we'll.
Yeah.
We'll have food.
Well, welcome.
Welcome.
Can I get just your first names? I know you said, I.
That's pretty easy.
And then I noticed she, she's Captain.
Yes, but I can't see your face. Can, so can you walk over by the director so I can see your face? All right, hi.
But I don't have a beard.
And then, uh, Heather Kodegla, and Fred Castro.
Oh, we got the C's.
We know all the members. It's a requirement to be on the board.
Yeah, we, Matt, we call you a lot, Steve.
Oh, nice, okay.
Awesome, thank you. Glad to have you on board.
So as we know from last meeting, the public information officer was selected. She was notified. She didn't, um, respond, so we rescinded the offer, and that will be re-announced. Environmental technician, we're still recruiting one of the two vacancies that we recruited for. Uh, engineer supervisor, um, interview selection was made, so Miss Susan Marquez, who was a engineer three, is now the engineer supervisor for. Uh, water resources. Uh, and as mentioned, we have, uh, engineer one position or three positions that are still pending announcement. And then environmental health specialist two, we got the packet two weeks ago, three weeks ago. Interviews conducted, selection was made, so James Cruz, who's an environmental specialist one, and Chain Takasi, who's an environmental specialist one, got promoted to two. And then we are re-announcing the, I'm sorry, the environmental health specialist one was announced.
It's currently being announced as a potato.
So we're waiting on the certification with some of that. Um, agency headquarters update, the A and E contract is still at the AG's office. It's been there since May twenty eighth promo. So we're still waiting. Um, they said that there's one document that, that it's pending, so we've already submitted it, so. I don't know what else we're missing, except the signature for it to come back. Um, public hearing, we had the public hearing on the proposed wastewater treatment and disposal system. Uh, on July thirtieth at four PM, and we have three comments to which Cap addressed and provided in the packet. Uh, we're still going through the RRF audit with the OPA, and we actually had a walk through July thirty-first. Um, so I put the Gura, um, Community Development Block Grant Disaster Relief, the C D E G D R. On the agenda, because that's still ongoing for consideration, and that's really to harden an area, uh, on the Debbieville site. Um, for future, uh, use as a transition site after a storm.
Under the, uh, public hearing, also there is a public comment here that started a couple of weeks ago for LaZon, landfill, the renewal of South Street. And the Anderson Air Force Base, uh, the renewal. Uh, Anderson Air Force Base has a hard field, maybe it's coming up, and they cannot get permits, but they just never use the permits. They just kind of like, just in case there's a backup, so that's also the public comment, the electronic phones right up there, displayed on the.
Yeah, so I will revise the administrator's report to, uh, to reflect, um, Glenn's comments, and then I'll decent, have our new standard. Uh, we still have the working group, um, bi-weekly for the new hospitals and show up, provide technical support, um, when needed. And then the meeting with ULCP, OSC, um, so they're still here, they expect to finish the cleanup on the Debbieville site. Uh, by the end of the month, which is fantastic. Um, I wanted to, um, send around pictures, so this is the nine point seven five acres. And as you know, we, they uncovered buried tires in the, in the approximate amount of a million tires. So they have to stockpile the tires, um, you know, in strategic areas according to the fire department. So these are all about, uh, fifteen feet high, I believe. Um, but kind of spread around the property. And anytime you guys wanna go see it, you can go see it, but there are several pictures. I'll pass that around so that you can actually see. Um, the progress that's been made in the cleanup, but also the, the problem that we still have with the tires. Um, when I was in Saipan last week, I reached out to a Mr. Mike Jang, who, uh. In CNMI is actually shredding, uh, used tires. I was not able to meet with him, but I did tell him that when I get back, I'd like to set up a phone call, um, phone call with him to discuss. You know, how we can maybe send tires to him. Because he's willing to pay to ship it, so however, that discussion, I'll, I'll update you next fall either. Or I'll update the chairman.
Is there other companies that sell tires?
But he's willing to take it, is what I heard, is that he's willing to pay for your shipment, take it. So that, that, that there's no expense, he's just willing to take it.
What do we put out an RFP? See if anybody wants to bet on it or, you know?
Or what?
Take the tires, so, I mean, because if he's willing to ship them, then.
He must make something out of it.
It must, somebody must make some money on it, I know, I know that, that.
I know, they're, they're, uh, new tire shredders coming in.
But we still have that on, um, you know, kind of in our back pocket, is whether or not we're still gonna buy a tire shredder. And then work with GSWA to shred the tires and then use the tires as cover material.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but, you know, we're kind of, when that A and E contract is finally signed. And we start the design, um, phase, which is six months from the time that it's truly awarded. Um, you know, how we use the property to, you know, to start construction. Will be limited by where those tires are made, you know, we're just gonna ship tires around, you know, um.
I mean, fairness, once we get the A and E contract, we'll have to put out the RFP for construction, so. We'll have some work to do, you know, in the dream that the A and E contract, should it ever get signed by the AG.
Yeah.
And, uh, and when we. And, uh, and when we.
I thought a million tires would look bigger.
I think you should go to the site there.
I think we should see it.
Go up there, yeah.
So the plan of attack is, you know, we have some metals that are on site. And we're looking at, uh, basically transporting it over to the global site, cause a lot of the metals are taken for free. It was just that it was commingled with other stuff, so they don't want to separate that. So it's just a matter of separating it out. And some of the residual, uh, loose, uh, waste that was not removed on the site, because it was not a part of the cleanup. Uh, we need to just transport down to LaZon.
We're not seeing any other subsurface contamination.
All the subsurface contamination that was identified was addressed.
Yeah.
Hazardous waste was transported off island for disposal, the first part would be sea, landfills. And the non-hazardous contaminated soils were stabilized and then transported to LaZon for disposal. So LaZon made definitely more than a couple of million dollars worth of disposal costs.
To include the six thousand dollars that we are expecting to be invoiced, um, for the, for the tipping fee. Right, so US EPA had a set budget, um, of the fourteen million. I think they're, they may go beyond that. They did put in a request for an amendment to increase that amount. But until that happens, there's still about six hundred thousand dollars that is being asked of Guam EPA to pay for, um, disposal, the tipping fee.
Which is done.
Oh, so it's done.
A check has been cut at the end of the last.
Okay, so we did pay six hundred thousand dollars.
That was for July.
So US EPA, while they are here, uh, uh, is also conducting a chemical roundup. So they have, I think, fourteen. So that's collecting, um, all kinds of waste chemicals. So the sites include Academy of Our Native Guam, St. John's, Notre Dame High School, Southern High School, Guam Community College, YOG, GDO Research and Education Center, YOG Department of Natural Resources, YOG Division of Agriculture and Life Sciences, YOG Marine Lab Sci, Marine Sciences Lab, and the YOG, um, where Guam Water Works in Tonon and Guam Water Works in Debbieville. So, um, they had a mix and categorized waste streams that included caustics, acids, oxidizers, uh, and elemental mercury, flammable toxins, and some radioactive material. Additionally, uh, staff went to the CRA, which is the California Resource Recovery Association, um, annual conference and trade show. And that is really focusing on, uh, sustainability through solid waste strategies, including product sewer chip, waste prevention, reuse, recycling, and composting. And so that was August third to the fifth in Monterey. Also, um, I along with two others went to the National Brownfields Conference. And that really brought together stakeholders of government, industry, community to share best practices on remediation and redevelopment of these contaminated properties, like our, like our Debbieville site. But also to also talk about, um, um, financing, right? Financing, uh, community, um, community engagement liabilities and, you know, just promoting the cleanup and revitalization of these contaminated, uh, properties. Uh, but really there was a, a big portion when, uh, talking about financing, uh, and liability for, for state, uh, programs. We do, so we get about a little over eight hundred thousand dollars for, um, one twenty three. Which is, you know, the largest. Usually we get about, uh, two hundred thousand, but we have about eight hundred thousand dollars. And then Cap and I went to the Mariana Island Conservation Strategy in Saipan. And this was continued engagement with DOD, US Fish and Wildlife, and DOI, which is focused on developing and promoting conservation and recovery initiatives for threatened, uh, endangered and at risk, uh, species. And more so, uh, in conjunction with military readiness. Right, so that really is the big push to find that balance between military construction and military readiness and national defense, with protecting, um, endangered species.
So where are you guys with that? So we're starting a draft document by the end of November.
Yeah.
Um, that really just sort of is a strat, like a strategic partnership between DOD, Fish and Wildlife, DOI, the governments of Guam and CNMI. The goal is to help us streamline efforts that we already have in place, like REPI, um, and some of the other grant, um, things that exist. But then also to highlight where we can say, okay, this project, or if we have this money, we can put it towards this project and focus it to conservation efforts by including these key tenants, right? So it's just, uh, it's a goal to help us streamline and then also to look at ways that where we lack funding. And this, we talked about laboratories, we talked about a few things. Where could we leverage, you know, monies that DOD and DOI or Fish and Wildlife have to help us both with conservation efforts? But there's a big emphasis on biosecurity. Because, you know, conservation gets really hard when you have a snake eating all of your birds and CNMI does not want our snake. So just thinking in ways that we can, um, increase, you know, day-to-day biosecurity inspections. We can leverage each other's agencies and then also leverage monies that might become available to DOD, because they're not gonna be available from like US EPA or some other sources. So just thinking, you know, big picture, how can we leverage those that work? There is also significant talk about, you know, considering conservation strategies instead of just in Guam or CNMI, but across the whole archipelago. So even though we may not have space available here in Guam, maybe we can leverage space that's available in the CNMI to help recover some of those populations while we figure out what to do here in Guam. So it's not giving hope, it's not giving up hope in Guam, but saying, you know, in the meantime, can we start to recover those populations?
Yeah, a breeding program and then re-letting, there's, there's already a program in place. So Department of Ag, uh, they had a partnership with CNMI, had a quota for the purple bird. So they had some populations out there that they told Cap would join a unit with. So they started, but I think they're looking at it region wider.
And then they got a lot of extinct species that we don't, that are thriving, so.
Yeah, we call them extrapavites. So in Guam, they're not here anymore, but they're not extinct. They just don't live in Guam anymore. But they do live in CNMI, like, see, I think college, see, I heard.
There's a lot.
Um, also, we were a part of the tenth annual assembly planner symposium, which was just this week. The theme being examining the vital role of codes, ordinances, and enforcement in fostering economic growth, community empowerment, empowerment, and managing coastal resources. And so we actually had, I know it says two panels, but we were actually, um, on three panels and three, yeah, three presentations, so. So, uh, Pete, uh, Glenn and Glenn.
Margaret.
Margaret.
Mary Car and Louise.
Yeah, their presentation, so they were fantastic. Uh, inspection activity, I won't go through all of it, but we conducted about four hundred inspections this past month. And then permits, we had about eighty-two permits that came in. And just, you know, kind of keep in mind that not all of the permit applications are on our Walter system. We're also working with the contractor to ensure that all of those permits are captured in that Walter system. And then we issued about a hundred and fifty-five permits. And then, having any questions?
Thank you. Uh, any MOBs issued over the last meeting, the last meeting?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I haven't signed any.
Thank you. Um, what's the latest with the DPW MOA to respond from the RRF?
So when I spoke to, um, the deputy last week, they, um, were supposed to be able to pro- provide an operations plan and expenditure plan, but, um, I didn't get one. So, um, I will follow up and hopefully by next ward meeting, um, we'll have a plan or expenditure plan to present to the board.
I believe we also gave them a draft, an example of what we're using for the YOG.
Yes.
To help them create that. Questions, comments?
I have one question on the, uh, US EPA chemical roundup. So the formal request was made, uh, in November of twenty-three. So they just then did the assessment, or maybe that's been ongoing for a while. And so then will they remove it or what is the, what's the endpoint there?
Yeah, so the chemical roundup actually was initiated after Typhoon Ma'wan. When there was, um, you know, when they, while they were here doing, uh, you know, hazardous waste, uh, cleanup as a result of Ma'wan, there was a question that was put out about whether or not there was waste chemicals in, you know, schools and laboratories that have not been or have been stored. They find, um, you know, some pretty dangerous stuff at YOG.
Yep, I remember that.
So that kind of triggered like, well, what else is here? So then we asked them, um, you know, to come back, uh, after that deployment, after Ma'wan, to come back and do another chemical roundup. So, um, then they.
Finished Friday.
Yeah, for sure. So, you know, they, you know, put out, you know, kind of feelers and they coordinated the whole chemical roundup along with our staff.
Okay.
We had a leak that the Navy is actually taking, that we identified through the chemical roundup. So we did a leak test. It's not leaking any radioactivity, so maybe it's gonna take it before the end of September.
Yeah, and you know.
The chemicals are, are being shipped. I guess that's my point, yeah.
Yes, Guam, I'm sorry, US EPA will be, um, the disposal.
Good, thank you.
So just to, um, just kind of a reminder that, you know, the chemical roundup, it, it's not something that, you know, they're advertising, hey, bring out your chemicals and all that. It's, it was a service provided because of the result of the typhoon. But, you know, all facilities need to manage your hazardous wastes. And they need to dispose it, store it, dispose of it correctly. Uh, we do have a hazardous waste manager program. Uh, they need to identify their waste streams and depending on what categories they fall under, whether they're, uh, small pond generators to large pond generators. They need to get an EPI number and then manage it effectively and then contract with an environmental company to property dispose of it off island. So that's hoping that, you know, again, luckily for the typhoon, uh, US EPA came out and, you know, made a call to identify some of these chemicals that schools are, you know, have after, as a result of that typhoon. And they managed to, uh, help us collect and remove them.
And sometimes these are really, you know, small, you know, high school type, you know, science labs, right? So they're probably just accumulating year after year.
But the, so the, in the part where it says improper storage conditions and unsecure locations, that there's no repercussions to them for that? For, uh, the, because these are, I mean, YOG.
I think we did a lot of collection and when US EPA was here, they collected a lot of things.
They promised not to do it again.
I'm sure there was, it was a trip that I conversed with.
Yeah, I'm sure there was education.
So, you know, depending on, on the, on the volume, right? So it could be, you know, extremely small volume generated.
On the shelf.
Yeah, so it might, you know, they might come under the wire for requiring to get a permit. But, um, for the most part, you know, they shouldn't. I mean, the, the safest bet is if you're not gonna, you don't plan to use it anymore, then yet and you're not gonna completely take it. Hold it, because when you start accumulating, that's where the problem lies. It's a liability and I know schools don't need any more liability than they already have, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a question about, um, is that the five hundred? Five hundred percent. Is that something that you aspire?
No, so they're, they're not taking, um, no, no, so we still have to, it, it's, uh, Gura that will determine what projects they will submit or they will fund. So everybody, um, puts in a proposal. And, um, Glenn and I talked and so he's actually done an excellent write-up for it. He submitted it as a, you know, pre-proposal. And hopefully it'll, it'll get chosen as a project in front. And we'll stop. I don't, do you think it's that? I think it was just the infrastructure of the hardened, hardened area. Cause we would ma, I mean, you know, we would manage the transition site for whatever number. And then we would. Oh, it'll double down as practice.
Yeah, I, I was thinking that it would be for.
Impossible, I think. It might be a new infrastructure. We'll, we'll check, but if we can include stuff, we'll include stuff.
Every time you give money, you should give stuff.
I agree. I guess I just had a kind of, uh, question. The thing that has been really quite scary to me is the idea that in a year, a half, two years, whatever, we won't have any money for EPA. So I'm, I'm wondering what, what is that conversation? What, what are the plans or when the conversation started? How are we, how are we surviving? So.
Very scary. We're making all these plans for different things, but I mean, deeper. So we have, uh, we have about, uh, twenty, twenty-six million. Yeah, twenty-six million dollars, right, which was part of the emerging contaminants grant, which was a private grant, which was forty-five million dollars over that five years. So, so far we have three years of that five-year grant. Twenty, we, we, twenty-seven million dollars, but we recruited, we bought supplies, material, um, you know, to support that, uh, that grant objective. We will be expecting year four of that, um, grant by September. So we will get about an additional nine million dollars, um, of that grant. We know already that i- if the current federal budget passes, then we will not get the fifth year. So we will not get the full forty-five million dollars. So while that, um, the four years of that money is specifically to, you know, build lab capacity for deep acid emerging contaminants, when we start the, uh, design phase of the, the building, we'll have to, you know, all the bells and whistles that, you know, the wish list that we put into building the new building, we'll have to really scale back, right? But the most important thing is to build the laboratory. And then we'll have to see what we scale down on for the rest of the building. But that's what it's gonna be useful. If needed, we will still stay in these buildings, refurbish that laboratory to bring it to, um, you know, to meet the objective, right, for the laboratory and equipment. And then we will have to use money to keep us afloat.
That's, I think, part of the effort that we're making with making sure we're rechecking key schedules.
Yes.
Looking at some of the work that we do that we don't charge for, that we should have charged, started charging for years ago, so.
So that's what we're working on is a key schedule to at least offset what we are losing. And who knows, maybe they will fund us, but at this point, we're not getting FY twenty-six money, which we will get at the end of FY twenty-six. So I've already approached the governor about going back on the general fund. But because we know that we're still getting, you know, that, that year four, uh, plus a hundred and eight thousand dollars as part of the consolidated grant, that we still have money to keep operation salaries going. So we're not in dire straits yet. You know, when we start looking at how much it'll cost to build the building and so forth, then we'll kind of see, um, where we are. And then I know for sure next year I will request to be on, um, general fund funding.
Right, cause I guess my concern is, um, you know, I would, I would rather not have the agency be in a situation where we are saying, okay, we've got like funding through three years. And then all of a sudden, two and a half years from now, we're like, oh, yeah, you know, we really don't have any money. How is that gonna work out? So I mean, I guess, um, you know, every time you read in the news about what's going on nationally with EPA and funding for that, it's, it's not good news. And so I'm very concerned that on a small island, we need those services more than, than ever. And we will continue to need them. So, um, I guess I would be interested in knowing kind of what the timeframe is for reevaluating other funding sources, whether it's fees or some other collaborative, something with other islands or other grant opportunities or what else is out there so that we're not, uh, you know, kind of reeling backwards. But I, I would think that that would be really important to kind of get that going and get.
I think we've been doing it in Paris room. I, I think we've been doing that since. I think we've been doing it in Paris room. I I think we've been doing that since January, um, or maybe November. So I, there, we're constantly looking for other grant opportunities, ways that we can get support from DOI or DOD with different funding coming in. Language and the NDA has changed, so we might be able to leverage direct money from DOD there. So we're, I mean, it's an everyday process where we're out looking for things. It's, it's not something that we're like, you stay here for a little while, we'll come back to you.
Yeah, so in the, in the National Defense Act, in that budget, there is um language that says that it will so, it will provide. Um funding for Guam EPA specifically. Actually, Guam EPA is like one of the only local agencies that actually is identified in the NDA. But it's the mechanism, so I've already reached out to US EPA, like, how does that work? You know, because they're still regulated, um, you know, DOD is still a regulated uh community, we're the enforcers, right? So we just want to make sure that there is a um mechanism for that to happen, so. We've already reached out, we're finding a way, that's gonna. Yeah, and I don't mean to suggest that nobody's been doing anything, I just think that, um, you know, just from the, as a board member, I. You know, it'd be helpful to me to see kind of where we are. So what what is the projection for, you know, for example, fees? Like, you know, okay, well, we expect, you know, going forward, our projection would be that certain amount, certain percentage of our budget would come from the fee structure. We could reasonably count on that, obviously, who knows what's gonna happen um in the future, it really helps to kick the ball. But those kinds of things, or maybe we focus a little bit more, we know that, um, you know, if we're talking about biosecurity. And that's really what's getting funded these days, and maybe what we're focusing on is we're having that be the the front runner for some of the programs. And still doing the other things that we're doing, but really focusing on that, we're focusing on whatever tires or whatever it is that we can focus on. But that, to me, that would be helpful because it gives me a lot of anxiety.
Us too.
Thinking, you know.
Us too. But that is my, man, that is my next project, actually, to take the fee schedule and look, Glenn's already done a lot of the work on it. But just looking at what existing fees and I know, I know the board has asked for it. We're gonna look at what fees we take in right now, what needs to be updated because it hasn't been updated in years. And where should we be charging fees that we're not currently charging fees for? And then say, okay, what, what regulations do we need to update? Where do we need to put that language in?
Yeah, I think.
We're just in today.
I I think we submitted a couple of board meetings ago. The breakdown of the uh schedules and the services that we provide.
Right.
So for the solid waste management program, the last time it was updated was in ninety-eight. And using the twenty-twenty-four, uh, it's the Bureau of Economic Analysis. Uh inflation rates, a hundred dollar permit would cost in twenty-twenty-four dollars because the twenty-five numbers are not out yet. A hundred and ninety-five dollars, or I have, I'm sorry, a hundred, yeah, a hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
So that's provided that hundred dollars was really to scale of the work that's done.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Because our, our.
Right, so, so what I ended up doing is I took the average of of the region. And what they were charging for this, for the same type of service that we're providing and came up with an average number. And then in addition to the average number, we got the increase by inflation. And in some cases, the inflation numbers were higher and in others, it was actually lower than the average. So it kind of gives us an idea or a basis to start with. And, you know, we can do that with the other programs as well based on how long it was last updated.
Some are thirty years.
Right.
Some are never.
Yeah.
That's true.
So that's my, hopefully by Christmas, I'll give you a present.
I suppose there is a point where. We'll have to present a budget to the governor's office and the legislature. So I guess there has to be a, there's a deadline for that. And so we have to be forward planning um and keeping us as a board of the semi-autonomous agency in the loop of what that proposed budget, so the legislature. That's also look like. Um so figuring out that date of when we have to have that spread.
And I think, if if I could add, uh, Mr. Chairman, is that, uh, you know, Guam EPA is not to be a self-sustaining. Operation, basically. I I mean, what percentage of the overall budget comes from fees? I guess it's not very high. So just kind of those round numbers, but, you know, if push comes to shove, we can always ask the senators, senators to amend the, you know. Uh recycling revolving fund. And that goes to operations. We know there's several million dollars there. So we have levers to pull and I hear what Heather is saying, but um we're just not there yet. But I think to to kind of think about some of these big ideas and and what we would do and then what the impacts of those decisions would be. Right? Because none of them are good. Uh but uh. We do have some options. And I sit on another board which was completely defunded and looking at only surviving till the end of uh of twenty-twenty-six. And down to one part-time employee in October. Now, this is, you know, humanities, so um it's not environmental protection. But, yeah, I mean, there's, it's real, it's scary, uh, as long as you know that Guam is in some other law. So that's how they're trying to do it because they're trying to get national EPA, it's trying to move some of the funding over there. That doesn't solve the national pr- uh problem, but it it's good for for Guam. So, yeah, it's not gonna be fun, that's for sure.
Well, and actually, I mean, and I think, I think that you have to look at this, obviously, as we're in sort of a crisis planning mode. But it's also a strategic planning mode, right? So, I mean, for better or for worse, we're being sort of shoved into that. So I think we need to really kind of think about that multi-year because who really knows? Maybe we'll get through this and then maybe there'll, there will be some other catastrophe four years after that. And so, I mean, I think that the strategic planning piece of it is is important. Um, you know, we don't have to go full-on chicken little, but but at some point we may, so anyway.
Thank you. Um, can, can we get a status update on the OD permit application? I believe we ran the news recently about court case and that, so what's the latest with the permit? I think the last update was that uh the Air Force contracted a consultant to conduct the study. So I was wondering, like, is there a follow-up on the status update of that study, how the Air Force is on that for that consultant?
No, we don't, we don't have the update on the contract between the Air Force and their contractor. Uh I know that a lot of that information is passed on to the region uh and the hazardous waste management program. And then until we resolve a lot of those questions, it's really between Anderson and their contractor and how they're gonna proceed. We just need the information that, you know, is needed for us to move forward.
Yeah, which was the evaluation of the use of alternative technologies. So until they have come out with the final report that tells US EPA and Guam EPA that they've, they've completed. They've completed it, they've analyzed it, this is what we're gonna do, or it's not suitable for their operations or whatnot. Then that's one of the board we crafted the final uh permit. So that's what we know, we're just waiting for them to make that determination.
Okay, I'm, your next call, uh, maybe can you ask them, when is that contract, contract completion date? Uh, and what is the date of their deliverables due, just so we can get a gauge of, uh, are we talking about five years, three years, one year? Just curious what that looks like. Thank you. Sam, before you ask, are our programs thinking to go about this moment or next meeting?
Um. No.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none, their motions returned. Next meeting will be third Thursday of September, which is September eighteen.
On my promotion to adjourn.
Second? Second, on favor? I, thank you, everybody.
Just FYI, uh, August thirty-first is the Labor Day, we have a tent, so there's some done. We're close to, we're closer to GBB side.
And Guam, don't believe, be on ours.